Okay, good evening. It is now six o'clock. We will go ahead and open up this tonight's meeting. So, welcome to Tuesday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three's Planning Commission meeting. First, we'll start with a call to order.
Chair Natasha Bosso.
Here.
Vice Chair Joan Stewart is absent, excused absent tonight. Commissioner John Dynan.
Here.
And Commissioner Ben Rubin is also an excused absent tonight. Commissioner Tidy Zamora.
Here.
And Commissioner Alternate Steve Link.
Here.
And Commissioner Alternate Sid Altman.
Here.
Okay, any Planning Commissioner member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
I have a conflict item three point one. And will recuse myself.
Hey, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence, and please make sure your comments are directed to the Planning Commission members.
Yes, good evening. I'm Milt Treeweiler. And I was born here in Stanislaus County, and I've lived here in Stanislaus County my entire life. I have some ideas and issues I'd like to discuss. And the first one is, this, of course, is our earth, our globe, our planet. And when I was born, seventy-eight years ago, there were two point five billion of us on this planet. Today, there are over eight billion of us on this planet. So you can see that our population of the, the population of the world is growing quite significantly in just the last seventy-eight years. So what is the importance of this? The importance of this is that Stanislaus County has the best farmland in the world. And we just have to be aware of that, and we have to preserve what we have. We don't, we can build buildings. We can build them in areas where you can't farm. In the Altamont, west of I five, areas over there. But when it comes to the best farmland in the world, which is surrounding Riverbank, we need to preserve it. We need to feed the nation. We need to feed our descendants. We need to think about our descendants. What are our descendants? What are they going to say about us? So I'm asking all of you to be ver, if you're on the vote, when the when the proposed Riverwalk development comes out, to oppose this. The best way to stop it is right here, in the Planning Commission. And you already know all the things about it, you know? We have the best farmland in the world. We have the climate and the water that we need to continue to farm on this land. It's not like down south. The Central Valley has farmland, good farmland, all the way down to Bakersfield. But we're the only county that has the water to continue to water this. Once you plant, or once you build on farmland, you're not going to take down those buildings. You've got to save, we've got to save this farmland. Build over in places where we can't grow stuff. That's the smart thing to do. That's the wise thing to do. That's what we want to do. We don't want to waste the farmland that we're going to need for our descendants. You know the percentages of farm, you know we can grow two hundred and fifty crops here. You know that we grow thirty percent of the fruits and nuts for the country. You know these things. But it needs to be stopped. You need to stop this silliness of building on this best farmland. And that's what I'm asking you to do. Be aware, the population is going up. The planet is not any bigger today than it was when I was born. We've gone, it's tripled. It's more than tripled in my lifetime. What's it going to do in your lifetime? It's going to keep going up. We've got to have food for people to eat. And the way we have that food is by preserving our farmland. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments at this time? We're not doing Zoom anymore, correct? Okay, so I will close the public comment period. And at this time, before we move on to the consent calendar, I would like to, as the chair, I would like to present a plaque to Donna Kinney, who is retiring tonight as her last meeting here with the Planning Commission. So, in appreciation and recognition of eight years of service to the City of Riverbank for your hard work and dedication, and for all the support you've given to others, we want to congratulate you on your retirement. You deserve it.
Thank you very much.
And just add, we do have some refreshments here, so afterwards, if you want to have any.
Now, on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the Planning Commission. Looks like there are three items. So, item two point one, posting of the agenda. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the City Community Senator, Center Bulletin Board, City Hall North and South Bulletin Boards, the Post Office, City Website, and email to the library on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item two point two, approval of the November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three agenda. This provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion, or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. And item two point three, approval of the minutes of the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, having been read by the individual planning commissioners and stands approved as submitted. Do we want to separate out two point three?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
A second.
Sid, second.
Okay, roll call. Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Let's see, I'll also just move on to Commissioner John Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Tidy Zamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Link.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sid Altman.
Yes.
Okay, item three, Planning Commission public hearings. We have item three point one. This is the vesting tentative map, zero four dash twenty twenty-three for Countryside Three. He has recused himself? Yes, physically.
All right. So, as mentioned, this is a vesting tentative map for Countryside Three. It's not working, and it's on. I checked. Try again. Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. So, the project consists of the vesting tentative map that subdivide the property at forty-one thirty-one Kentucky Avenue. The project is approximately four point six acres to be subdivided into twenty-two single-family residential lots, a basin, and street improvements. Thank you. The vacant site is bounded by the grasslands at Countryside to the north, some county pastures and ranches, ranchettes to the east, the Riverbank Industrial Complex, and some more county pasture to the south, and the enclave and expired map to the west. The zoning is currently planned development because the proposed lots are smaller than the R one zoning requirements. This is a project location. At the very middle, that street there is Central Avenue, and then at the bottom of the yellow rectangle is Kentucky Avenue. Here's an aerial of the site. It's in the, the project is in the yellow box. Next, please. Here's a copy of vesting tentative map oh four twenty twenty-three. As you can see, there are improvements to Central Avenue in Kentucky, and improvements as far as two cul-de-sacs within the project itself. The general plan designation is, was low-density residential. And the zoning designation is planned development, PD. The project is consistent with the general plan by many policies, but I pulled out a few of them. Three point one for policy design. This does create walkable neighborhoods. There are sidewalks throughout, as well as on the connecting streets. Policy design three point two asks for attractive residential subdivisions. These will have some slightly varied frontages. There'll be a lot of landscaping to soften up the houses and the, and the streets. And the applicant, as part of the PD zoning, is providing upgraded garage doors and garage lights, and upgraded landscaping as well. Generally, landscaping might be described in fifteen-gallon containers. Some of the upgrades may take those up to twenty-four-inch box sizes, which is considerably larger, and will grow a lot faster to shade the neighborhood. Next, please. Environmental, the proposed project is exempt from additional SEQA analysis. When this map first came before the Planning Commission, it received an exemption for qualified housing projects. A tentative map is only good for two years, and then they have to come forward to the City Council to get a final map. In this case, the developer had moved forward and had gotten a subdivision improvement agreement approved, which is one of the steps before final map. They were going to have the final map approved, and it looked like they might go into contract to actually sell the project and sell the lots. So they didn't want to put the final map in their name. They were hoping to put it in the buyer's name. The project discussions kind of fell apart. They end up keeping the property, but got so busy with some other other projects that they allowed the map to expire. So it's been expired for about a month. So now they're coming back in front of the Planning Commission to get another tentative map. That map will be good for, it's a vesting tentative map, so it will be good a little bit longer. Part of having a vesting tentative map is they don't have to have a development agreement. So it kind of makes less work to transfer the project to a buyer if that does indeed happen. Next slide, please. So the public notice was published in the Riverbank News. It was mailed to forty-one residents and property owners and businesses within three hundred feet of the property lines of the site. Those both occurred the first, or excuse me, November eighth and November sixth. And the recommendation is to adopt the resolution number two thousand and twenty-three zero one six to approve the vesting tentative map for Countryside Three. Thank you. I'd be happy to take any questions, and we have a project engineer in the audience, if you have anything technical you'd like to ask.
Any of the planning commissioners have questions? Should we open up to public comment if any of the public would like to make a comment?
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, my name is Rick Mummert with Benchmark Engineering, forty-two sixty-five Spire's Way, Suite A, Modesto, California. And thank Donna for all her service and efforts over the years for, for our projects. Always paid attention to it in great detail, guided us sometimes when we needed the guidance. So appreciate that, Donna. Didn't get a picture of you in the chair with the plaque, but have it in my memory. As Donna mentioned, this, this project slipped through our fingers a little bit with the timing. Our client, Mercola Wilbury Communities, as Donna mentioned, had a, a buyer for the property, and we put the map on hold. We actually could have recorded the map probably a couple of months ago, but we put it on hold and then found out that it expired. So we're here tonight. All the conditions are in place that were in place previously, and the actual improvement plans for the basin and, and the subdivision improvements are already approved. So now we'll go through the, getting this tentative map hopefully approved tonight. Look forward to your favorable vote. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
There's no other public comment. I will close the public comment. And I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one six to approve vesting tentative map number zero four dash twenty twenty-three for Countryside Three.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call. Chair Bosso.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Zamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Link. And Commissioner Altman is abstaining from voting. So passes four oh.
Thank you, Donna.
Four one, right?
Four zero one.
Four zero one.
Okay, moving on to item four, Planning Commission comments. Does anybody have any comments?
I, I just want to thank Donna for all of her service here and that. We're going to miss you a lot, both here on the Planning Commission and also on the private side with all the help that you've given us and guidance and that. So we appreciate what you've done, and you will be missed.
Donna, your expertise continues to amaze me. Your friendship, I value very much. And thank you for all the support you've given me and all the patience you've shown with me, and you will be missed.
Great to meet your acquaintance. Yes, I don't know what I'm going to be missing, although I have had a taste of it. But I know from the public area where we've come across, where I've watched your presentations, I know they've always been very well-received.
Yes, thank you, Donna. Okay, moving to item five, county referral and correspondence or information.
Have no referrals at this time?
And item six, staff comments.
I do have staff comments. In fact, I have another really short PowerPoint to share with you. I started working here in two thousand and fifteen, and some of you were on the Planning Commission at that time and still are. And so I thought I'd do a quick projects list to show what we've been through together. Subdivisions. You guys have been with me since the very first one I worked on, California Estates, Diamond Bar East, Diamond Bar West, all three countrysides, the River Run, Ward Villas, Riverbank Commons, Crossroads West, the Units One and Two, the Herrigfield Maps, the Enclave, the Heritage, the Day Show Map, Pocket Senior Housing, Rivers Edge, and various parcel maps. So probably close to thirty maps altogether we've worked on. Cannabis, you've got to see the Flavors Dispensary come through. The Perfect Union, which was Riverbank Cannabis Collective, that one came through as well. You provided recommendations to the City Council on the development agreement and the conditional use permit for all of these cannabis businesses. Next, please. We've worked on ordinance amendments. The housing element adoption was the first one when I got here. It was just about complete, and I got to be here for its adoption. The CX one zoning, which is a mixed-use zoning the city didn't have before, that John Anderson had been working on at the time. We looked at the circulation element as far as the width of streets. We did a variance update, so variances stopped with the approval of the Planning Commission. It did not have to go to City Council. Specific plan zoning, before we had a Crossroads West specific plan, we did not have that type of zoning. It gives the developer through hard times a little bit more flexibility in putting their project together. You've worked on the cannabis amendment. We had a mistletoe amendment come through to help our code enforcement officers enforce that. Skate ramp regulations was a big one, when we had a gentleman build a skate ramp in his backyard and irritate half the neighborhood. Mobile food vending, there were no food trucks in the city when I started here. And the architectural and site plan reviews that we did didn't really have its own chapter in the zoning code. We were just kind of winging it until we got that established. You worked on the tiny house villages, sidewalk vendors and the fees, a cannabis host ordinance, which had, if cannabis was allowed at any sort of teenage parties, it allowed the Police Department to actually do something about it. There was nothing on the books until that point, just alcohol. You worked on electronic signs, which we now have in the city. We've been through a couple of building code updates, which happens every three years. We did a cultivation ban on hemp. The ADU ordinance you helped us with, we had a couple of workshops on that. We went through administrative procedures, and also had a workshop on yards and setbacks. As far as architectural and site plan reviews, you know, you did the Horizons Clinic that's next door to City Hall South, Stanislaus Cheese down the street, some offices for Saint Francis of Rome, which unfortunately weren't built. The Del Rio Offices, we have a really nice building on the corner of Third and Topeka, there we go, Topeka. The Lucky House Expansion, although they didn't expand, they ended up remodeling. Elevations was a cannabis business that wasn't able to move forward, but now it's going to be the Pump House Restaurant there. Dollar General, there was no way to get milk and bread and stuff on this side of the railroad tracks, or that side of the railroad tracks, but there is now. One Church has come before you a couple of times for the architectural review of additional buildings that they have. And Canamar, another dispensary that hasn't been built but is still looking for a home in the city. You did the Monshine Showroom, which is under construction right now. Summer Fair, which is the Concierge Storage Unit Facility, which their improvements are under construction right now. Dutch Brothers is up and running. The Housing Authority Community Center is moving forward, and they're working on their plans. There's a church, Tiny House Village, under construction right now. And you did the site, or the architecture review of all the subdivisions that we have here in our city, which I said was, you know, eighteen of them, plus some parcel maps as well. You've approved conditional use permits for the IMAX Theater Screen, Galaxy Theater Alcohol, the Del Rio Restaurant, Chipotle, Dollar General, El Mesquite, Lucky House Pizza Plus. They're all places now that you can go into, sit down with your family, have some food, have a glass of wine or a beer. And the mobility antenna that's over there by O'Brien's Market, too. You did the conditional use permit on that. Lat and Freeze Ice Cream had to have a use permit to open up business there, and they're working away. The Daily Dose, El Hacalito, the Pump House, have all, and the Black Diamond, have all gotten alcohol permits through you. And recently, the Ametis Biofuel Plant, although you weren't convinced it was a good fit for the city, it did go forward to the, and was appealed to the City Council, and they did approve it. Variances, you've worked on several variances for homes, lots that ended up a little bit wanky, and we needed to do a variance to get the houses to fit there. The IMAX sign was a little bit bigger than the code allowed, and they got a variance for that, and it turned out really nice. Next, please. You've also worked on code enforcement and appeals with me. We looked at outdoor overnight parking, somebody who kept violating that in the C two district. There's illegal fencing on First Street and High Street. Fireworks, you know well, as far as appeals go there. Skate ramps, and even helped with the study of the abandoned vehicle fees. Next, please. I've worked on grants and have brought you projects to talk about as far as using the grant money. We use the SB two grant to streamline the housing approval processes and join the county and other cities in getting seven sets of fully engineered architectural plans for ADUs that are free to the public. We've done a REAP grant and funded a Civic Spark Fellow who's come before you to provide a, a presentation on environmental justice, and she conducted outreach into the community. We followed up with an internship position to carry on that work. Now, we have some solid information on environmental justice in order to get a community group together and work on those issues for, and policies for the general plan update and housing element update that are coming up. Next, please. And finally, the LEAP Grant, which funded a new cloud-based permit processing system for five years. Has ability to take online applications and payments and allow the public access to monitor their applications. We've been meeting weekly with them. We're still not live yet. There's been some issues with trying to take the fees and have the system automatically break down the fees and send them off to different coded accounts. And that's kind of been a stumbling block for us, but I've got staff in the next couple of weeks working on the program and trying to find out the bugs. You know, some of the modules have been completed already. They're still working on the building department portion. But hopefully, at least code enforcement can start getting in there and getting a feel for the new program and working out the bugs, so we can get that up and running for the public. Miscellaneous items, we did some upzoning for the housing element of two six four four Morel. Now that's coming forward. We have a new owner for that property who's interested in doing some apartments there. You've done a lot of tentative map extensions. Yearly report to HCD has come in front of you for presentations to talk about the housing and other work that we've been doing throughout the year and the permits that we've issued. I've brought you the overdose awareness day to talk about Narcan and talk about what a problem fentanyl is in our community. We've been to Monterey conferences together. One time, the power went out, and they left light sticks along the highway, hallway, for us to go back and forth to our rooms and the sessions. There was a training in Newman that some of us went to, and we didn't have Planning Commissioner alternates before, when I first started working here. So that's always a good thing, too, you know? Got two of you sitting up here tonight. Next, please. So I just want to thank you for all your help over the years. It's been a pleasure.
We're going to be ending the, well, we do have the, the refreshments.
I do have one more thing to say. We do have the date on there for the next Planning Commission meeting, but as of now, I do not have an item for that meeting. So there's a good possibility it's going to be canceled on December nineteenth.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting.